And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Call this meeting West Burn City Council to order roll call please.
Crowder.
I'm here.
Rowley.
Here.
Knightmeyer.
Here.
Please.
Here.
Here. Need to perfect approve the agenda.
So who?
Support. Motion to support, any discussion? On call.
Rowley.
Hi.
Knightmeyer.
Hi.
Hi.
Waterman.
Hi.
Crowder.
Hi.
Consent agenda.
Motion to approve is presented.
Support.
Emotional support to approve consent agenda items one through seven, which are the minutes from regular city council meeting on February twenty eighth, two thousand eighteen. Approve Officer Ed Parker and Ken Peterson's attendance at the active shooter threat training program. Approve payment to Denny's Auto, approve payment of J and M displays, approve payment Mississippi Valley Palm, approve clerk's monthly financial report, and approve claims list as percent of the amount of fifty-three thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and fifty-nine cents. Any speculation? Roll call.
Knightmeyer.
Hi.
Hi.
Waterman.
Hi.
Crowder.
Hi.
Rowley.
Hi.
Motion carrying. Staff reports. Dan.
I don't have anything tonight.
Do you have anything? Okay, next thing is public work Friday.
Oh, just a couple of things. Um, Brad's been staying pretty busy running the sweeper we pretty well have. We haven't cleaned up from the salt and sand we put down this year and we'll be back patching again starting tomorrow and hopefully give them a little patch again in the next week or so. That's all I have.
Do you have anything for Andy? Dennis, this is where I put you on, so if you wanna tell how much plans are.
I got some events that I can do.
Okay. Why don't you sit here at the table that way?
Okay.
You can hear that though.
I just got that, this kinda gives us an idea of what we're gonna do.
Thank you.
Read them forward.
Thank you, Dennis.
It's right here. It's a lot of good stuff. No, it's all. Okay, we've been kinda contemplating this for a while and we finally decided to pull the trigger on it. Cause we're going to, uh, be issuing standardized container system in West Burn. So we'll use an automated.
Hold that thing down. There you go. You don't have to talk into it, that's fine.
Okay.
Hold her down.
Um, so we use an automated truck. Uh, we now have about three hundred customers besides the city, or three thousand customers that we do with the automated truck. The city's only one that we don't. And the reason why is the safety and injuries of our workers. Uh, waste hauling is the fifth dead- death job that there is in America. Working up, loading from the back like we do. We've had so many close rear ends, people don't pay attention about running into ya. Plus it helps control our workman comp value. So what we'll be doing is everybody will get a sixty-five gallon. I got two of them out here. I got, or a ninety-five, I've got a sixty-five and a ninety-five out here. Most of them are ninety-five, but if somebody puts out one little bag and they got a little garage, that we can give them a sixty-five, which is a smaller one, they fit better. And we'll still be picking up just like we do now in the alleys yet and that. It just, people will have to place them. And everybody will get a flyer when we deliver it to show the rules. Yeah, it'd be three foot from the alley or that, and right now it's been in the contract for years that it's supposed to be within five foot of the alley, but we never did really enforce it that much, but. And three foot away. It'll help beautify the city, eliminates the cans, slightly cans, racks and alleys, you know, along the garages, so the snow equipment will have a little more room there. And you don't have the lids gone and trash blowing, you don't have cans blowing around the alley and that. Um, there's no cost to the city, we furnish all the containers, they belong to us. We maintain them unless somebody puts ashes in it, burns it, then it's kinda different, you know, whatever wasn't our fault. I had a fire a couple of weeks ago on the truck cause somebody threw ashes in there. But, uh.
So you're talking about giving everybody ninety-fives?
Yeah, it'll be ninety-fives unless they request a sixty-five. And what we do is if you get a sixty-five and you're continuously overflowing it, then you're gonna move up. And when we come there and you got an extra can, the cart's empty, after a couple of times, we're probably not gonna dump the cart, the can. You know, if the can's empty and you're just setting the can out, we're kinda defeating the purpose of what we're wanting to do here.
I got to looking at them, I said, probably, you know, like myself, we could probably get by with sixty-five.
Right, right. If you've got, um, a lot of the newer, with the older people, and we still will do the elderly, we've got a few elderly where we go get the, you know, they can't bring it out their house, we still do that. I mean, it's not, you're not gonna have to drag it out there, but, uh, the, the main thing is people have to learn where to set them. And, and we work, it's, we'll work with them and, you know, for a while, we'll keep tagging it, you know, and pretty soon if they keep doing it wrong, then it's probably not gonna get picked up and then they'll wonder why, but. Most everybody that we got them really like them. Uh, the other cities we put them in didn't have them and now you can't take them away from them once they got them, so.
There's an older lady that has just a small bag.
We've got some that they just put a little bag out, we'll jump out and grab that, you know, as long as it's, you know, an elderly person or disabled, you know, if it's a perfectly healthy person, then they need to.
But don't bother me, I mean, I can walk across.
Right.
Pick it up and throw it in mine anyway if I get the bigger ones, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, we, it'll still be the same way that, you know, if you got a little dinky Walmart bag.
Yeah. She just comes out with a small bag and that's.
Right, mm-hmm.
Except on icy days, I tell her, don't.
Right, there's no reason to.
Yeah, alright.
So I know there's a few large families, what about those? I know I've seen some places where.
Right, and that's another thing that we're gonna, we're gonna really start cracking down on that we're, I think we're getting a lot of dumping in West Burlington. And a lot of it's because Burlington's only one bag. I think we got some landlords bringing it over from their other rentals. So what we're gonna do is if a ninety-five, you know, some family, we've got, already got carts, some people rent them from us now already. You know, up at Camerly, we got some that's got two, three carts, which if you want another cart, we will dump a can, you know, if you got an extra can, it ain't like it all gotta be in the cart. But we like it, you'll find out the whole three cans, so you know, a normal family. If you start having a lot of extra, then we're probably gonna start looking through the trash and investigating to make sure that it's coming from that residence. You know, and some people do produce a lot, but if it's consistently that way, we're gonna check in. And if it is from that residence, that's fine, but we're gonna start checking it, cause I think we're getting a lot of extra, extra moving in. We've caught them in the past, people that's watching kids and when they drop the kid off, they drop a bag of trash off, you know? So. And, and it's, it's not good for the city of West Burlington, cause it's gonna end up costing more, you know? Hans knows what the landfill rates are.
Well, I think we're gonna probably need to get this out in, in the news media and, uh, and have people come in, the ones that are interested, come in to take a look at these containers to see.
Right now, I've ordered a, a certain amount of the sixty-fives, which I thought would probably be what it's gonna take and I can get more if we need to, but right now it'll be mainly ninety-fives and then the sixty-fives that I got ordered.
And maybe that's what you just need to start with and then after a couple of months, figure out.
When we did the other cities, uh, you know, we put the ninety-fives out and then they'd call, no, I don't need that big of one, and then we'd swap, swap out.
Maybe we go that route.
Because.
Dennis, when you and I talked about this, I don't know when that was.
A long time ago.
Long time ago now.
This has been in the works for a while and I've been, and finally.
Is it, is it Danville that you said you've already done this?
Yeah, Danville's off the cart.
It's working okay and?
Fine, it's, we are, that's the town that had no, just cans.
Yeah.
And after about a month, all of a sudden, all the cans are in the carts, you know?
And then one other thing, you're gonna have to go up and down the alley twice now though?
Yeah, we'll have to go twice.
You'll have to do side to side, right?
Nice thing would be on the street, but, you know, let's start with the alley and then.
But what would you do though with, with, where we're parking on one side of the street and the cars?
What we do is, is, um, is you put it at your driveway.
Okay, I ain't got a driveway.
The direction you're going.
Okay.
Okay? And then we can kinda cut over and reach it, believe it or not. We can reach out eight foot, so we can actually reach it back up. And sometimes you gotta get out, which, you know, sometimes we need to get out a little bit. But, uh, we just, this is just a lot quicker way and, and there'll be some route restructuring after we get it going. It may not, you know, right now we do Monday and Tuesday, it may be part of Monday goes on to Tuesday. The ideal way we would like to do it is get going, is bring one truck in, another truck, and actually do it on one day, is what we would like to eventually change over to just.
Do the whole town in one day?
Yeah. And.
Tuesday and Fridays. I'm used to that one.
Well, it'd be, you know, like, we, we do it now, you know, the first time, Monday or Tuesday, it'd be either one of them days. Because, and that gives us more on holidays. I've got four automated trucks and we run them all on a holiday and if somebody gets done with one route, they can come over and, and finish it up. You know, now I really don't have two, three man crews, you know, to run up, up and down the alleys and, and that on holidays, so it makes it kinda rough on us. So we gotta do both days on one with that. It's amazing how, how much you can haul with a, with, and you're in the truck, you're in the environment, air conditioned heat, you're not slipping up the icy alleys and. I've only had a few workman comp claims over the years, but everyone's been on the back of that truck. You know, except for maybe a scratch or a Band-Aid or something like that, from either slipping or falling or hurting her back or, and that's what happens. It groups us all into workman comps, so our companies that we can get our workman comp from are, are small, so you know what the price is and. Where if we get this automated, we're also changing our commercial stuff a lot, so you'll see a lot of different commercial dumpsters in, in West Burlington. Rather than rear loads, they'll be front loads. So we're gonna switch basically all West Burlington over to front loads too, on the, on the metal dumpsters. Put your one guy in the truck, not out hooking up and running it, so. It's been a big decision for us, but we're, we're just ready to move forward and it's where we gotta go, you know, to keep expenses down and.
Okay, well, anybody have any questions?
And the carts are ordered yesterday, so it takes four to five weeks to get them. So as soon as they come in, we'll start moving them. It'll take a while for us, you know, it'll be that many carts out.
Plus you'll assign a number to each one, to each household?
Each, um, I got a real nice list from the city, you guys give me all the, and what we do is we put the cart number, so that way if somebody's missing a cart, which it don't happen very often, but I've had, in Burlington, I've had people decide they wanted to haul their cans in them or whatever, and there's a cart there and they wheel it down the street with whatever they got. It gives us an idea of where it's at or what's missing and, and assign it to it.
Dennis, will we get a notice when you're gonna bring those to the addresses?
Um, we can do that, uh.
I'm just trying to figure out, cause I've got, currently got a can myself of your guys'.
Right, and you rent one now from us?
Right.
So that will go away if you only got one can?
Mm-hmm.
So.
So you'll replace that?
I'll replace it or if it's a good one, we can just leave it. I mean, it's, it depends. We got some that's out that's old ones that we'll replace. And, and if you got a good one, we'll just leave it there. We won't, unless you want a new one, you know?
As long as it's gonna be compatible with the lift.
Switch it out, cause we'll just reuse it, is all we'll do, we'll clean it up and.
Right. Yeah, I mean, if it's gonna be compatible with your lift.
Yeah, yeah. And these are all brand new carts.
Okay.
So we're starting from scratch and. Now, the, the sixty-fives won't be that color, they'll be the same as the other one, just a different brand that I bought that I had there. That's actually my cart from my house, so.
Alrighty. Well, appreciate you coming in.
Okay. I mean, if you guys got any questions, you can contact me anytime.
And.
I, I think it's gonna be better, I think you're gonna have a lot cleaner environment and.
We'll get something out in a newsletter, I think Kelly was wanting to do a newsletter anyway, so.
Yeah, we're gonna do a newsletter so we can put something in there over all the residences.
Get that out.
And each person will get a pamphlet when we deliver them, explaining how to do it, you know, where it needs to be placed, you know, and that. And I think you'll find a lot of them, won't leave them at the curb or at the alley or whatever.
Pull it back.
At the alley, they'll take them up near the house and use them and then wheel them back down, as long as they remember. It's a learning curve, but usually it's not too bad. The biggest problem we usually have is the direction they put them. We can kinda pick them up any direction, but it's a lot better if they're facing. That's usually the thing we have to remind people of, because what happens when they're backwards, when you dump them, all the gar, all goes over the lid and, you know, makes, just makes it messy and that, it's just better if it's facing the truck.
Alrighty.
And, and when you do have to get out, you're right there, you know, it's a right-hand drive truck. I mean, you get out, you got like one step and you're, you're to wherever, so if you gotta pick up paper or something or a little cardboard box or something, somebody's got.
Well, maybe this will help with recycling too.
It'd be nice, cause they, they need to do more, I think, especially the ones that get a lot. Packing is so bad anymore, you know, it's, it's crazy. I, I redid my bathroom and I bought a vanity in my, it had so much packing in it. I had a cart full of packing when I got done, just off a little vanity.
Okay, well, thanks for coming in.
Okay, yep.
Anything else for public works? Police Department, Chief?
I have nothing to report.
Everybody have anything for Police Department?
Sounds like you've been busy.
Yes, we have been very busy. Yes, the guys have been doing a great job.
Yeah, did you, who posted that stuff on Facebook?
Both, I did it and I just recently had Stacia start doing it, but I've been doing it up to that and just gotten for the longest time, great reviews.
Yes.
Because it's, it's on our, been on our website forever, but people look at Facebook more often.
Yeah, I thought that was cool the other night when you put those arrests on there.
Yeah, and I'm hoping it's a deterrent.
Yep.
Alrighty. Fire and building.
That's my task, nothing else matters. Really nothing to report at this time.
Okay. Kelly, you got anything?
That's nice.
Leslie, besides budget?
Budget night.
Bud?
Let me just touch on a couple of quick things. Sean, I'm assuming the fire department's gonna do a pancake breakfast for the Fourth of July?
That's what I've been hearing, yeah, you can count on it.
Okay, I, I assume that. Uh, and then I'd only like to mention up there in the consent agenda where we approved the, the, uh, payment to J and M displays, that's our fireworks for Fourth of July, if anybody ever wondered what kinda money that costs us. And so, uh, if you've got other people that you can get to help contribute to our Fourth of July fireworks, we could use the help. We have got a young lady this year gonna help us, help Rick and I try to solicit some funds, but, uh, we've had some people drop off the list and we've had some people lower their contributions, so we could actually use a little help raising a little money. Other than that, we're in full swing, working on it, we've got a couple of bands signed up and I'll have more information as we get closer.
Rick?
Go.
Trace? Well, I'm good. Alrighty. This time I'll open the floor up to anyone wishing to address council matters that are not on the agenda. Please step forward, state your name.
Michael Cartel. I'm just trying to get some questions answered. Um, last week, Mayor, you said that you were told that it's not the problem, is that correct? Didn't say that. It's not the problem?
The problem is that there isn't, uh, any inflow of mud.
No, wait, no, there's been a statement made that the storm sewer has nothing to do with the issues on my property. Who made that statement?
That's what I was told.
You were told that by?
Our engineers, two different engineers.
Names?
I, I even took the time to look at the video and I see nothing on the video. And you were in the truck when the camera was going through the, through the sta, uh, storm sewer? You seen it yourself?
I was only there for part of it, but I did see that.
Yes, I seen that also, but that, but that's not mud.
No, that's concrete that came through the seams in the storm sewer, through a seam. They didn't even look at the entire seam.
But it's not mud.
Huh?
It's not mud.
What do you mean it's not mud?
It's concrete.
Yeah, so if the concrete got through there, then the soil and the water is getting through there too.
Sometime, there isn't, there wasn't any water coming through.
What?
There wasn't anything coming through on the video.
Well, of course not, you wouldn't let me run any water to anything, Mayor.
Well, I don't know exactly how far away that is from your driveway.
Excuse me?
I don't know exactly how far that is away from your driveway.
What does, what, what do you mean my driveway? I don't understand.
Well, I mean, how far away from your property is that patch or whatever that is, that concrete?
It's.
I have no idea.
It's, huh? I'm just saying, that's a breach, that's what they, that's what you'd call a breach, a breach.
And it's looks like it's been fixed. That looks, it looks like it's been fixed.
What?
Well, I mean, how did the concrete get there?
You got me, but it got through the seam there. See, you know, see what that one there is? You know what that's laying down here? Down here? That's the grout, remember? You guys told me it never happened.
Correct? You told me that's the.
Not what you told him. So it was, it was CIT that told you that that storm sewer has nothing to do with the issues on my property, is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm gonna go on.
Uh, it's not in the report. Could you get that for me in writing? I'd like that statement in writing, please.
I mean, I think you got everything we got.
No, that's, that's it right there. That's CIT's report. CIT's report. Where they talk about, there are a total of nine sump knockout plugs missing between sixty-one feet and one hundred and nine feet. That's what the representative from Rinkner Materials, he didn't know what they were talking about. And.
Mr. Cartel, I'm not, I'm not gonna sit here and argue with you.
I'm not gonna argue, I'm just trying to get.
We're not gonna resolve this.
I am just trying to get some answers, Mayor.
If you need to do something, take us to court.
No, I'm here.
And you wanna settle this, we could do it real quick.
It's settled.
It wouldn't take more than an hour.
As far as the city is concerned, it's settled.
Why won't you look? It's not, uh, settled as far as I'm concerned, it's my property. This isn't over.
Then take us, take us to court, let a judge decide.
I am going to be here every week if I have to.
Well, and I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna give you five minutes today.
That's fine.
Next week, I'm gonna give you a minute.
That's fine, that means, uh, it'd just take more years to get it done, cause I've already been at this how many years?
Well, it's not gonna, it's not gonna resolve anything.
You know what? You brought up the ombudsman last week, correct?
Correct.
Um, you know what Christie Hirschman told me?
I have no idea who Christie Hirschman is.
She is the ombudsman. She is the ombudsman, Christie Hirschman. She's told me that she believes that the water and the soil is going into the storm sewer. It's a fact, it is, there ain't no doubt about it, and you people know it.
Totally opposite what, what they're, what the ombudsman's engineers found themselves.
Let's settle this. Come on over, I've got dye tablets at home still.
I've been there a couple of times, Mr. Cartel.
Your, your suggestion was it might be going to an underground aquifer.
I think we're, I think we're done talking.
Settle this to my satisfaction, go down there and look. I can get the dye tablets and the pump and I could, we don't even have to get a professional to do it. Go take a look. And if, and if you're right, if you're right, I'll, I'll drop this forever. If you're wrong, then you'll fix it.
Our engineers, our engineers are telling us we're right.
Who's your engineers told you that? What engineers? Can I have their names, please?
You know who they are.
No, I don't. Uh, you know what?
Frank Renniker.
You know what Brian Bros said?
He's not our engineer.
I know he's not your engineer. But yeah, I'm just asking you, you know what Brian Bros said? You know Brian Bros, you think he's an honorable man?
Yes.
Okay, well, he says that he does believe, uh, that showed signs of soil getting in there. And he also stated that my video, uh, was probably, uh, proves that, uh, my issues were valid. My point was valid.
Like I said, if you believe that, take us to, take us to court, let a judge decide.
Take us to court, that's what you want. See, you know what, I'm already helping to pay your attorney's fees for this with my tax dollars. Be nice if I had a tax base to go hire a lawyer with, but I don't, I'm not a rich person.
As far as the city is concerned, the issue is settled.
Why?
Because.
I can blow holes in it, every, every bullet point on here, every one, Mayor, every one.
We've done everything. We've had it televised.
No, you, you lied to me.
No, I didn't, sorry.
Yes, you did, what, did you tell me?
I told you that we would do every, we would get our engineers and we would televise it.
No, you said to me, if that's what we need to do, that's what will be done.
Right, and that was, that was the televising.
And you, huh?
No, I, no, I asked you specifically, I said, Mayor, if you're gonna go down there. If it's our problem, we would fix it, it's not our problem.
Well, if you refuse to see the problem, then you can keep refusing.
I looked at it, I looked at the video, you told me last, you asked me last week if I, if I seen the video, I said, no. I, I looked at the video the last few days.
Farce.
Mr. Cartel, we're done.
Look.
Excuse me, we're gonna go on with the next issue on our.
Okay, I'll be back.
You ain't fine, you can come back each week.
This isn't gonna go away, Mayor. You guys, aren't any of you gonna have a little self-respect here and stand up to this? You know, come on, I, I heard you guys speaking a little bit ago, come on. Any of you, you're still not even talking to me. Here. You guys can even have these.
Thank you, sir.
The grout down there, the concrete protrusion, they call that deposit, coming out of the side of the storm sewer, through a seam, and they're saying there's no breaches? You wanna, have you seen the, this, the bullet points they sent the ombudsman's office?
Hey, Mr. Cartel, why don't we just go ahead and, you can email them, they all have email addresses.
I've tried emailing them, nobody responds to me.
With your attachments to them, so they can see that, okay, please?
I did, I did.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else wishing to address council? Seen the video? This time I'll open a public hearing on, uh, concerning the budget for fiscal year twenty nineteen. Did we receive any written comments? Anybody wishing to make comment on the budget? Any council members wanna make a comment on the budget? As always, as in previous years, Leslie has prepared a, uh, slide. I'm gonna go through that. What's that?
Go do the clicker, while you're talking, you want me to do it?
I can do it. Well, just dim the light for a little bit. Easier to say. All right, this is the budget for fiscal eighteen nineteen. And the first slide is like in previous years, we've got two hundred and ninety-four cities that have lower tax rate and six hundred and forty-six cities that have a higher tax rate for the fiscal year seventeen, eighteen. Out of twenty-five cities in the twenty-five hundred, thirty-five hundred population range, uh,
uh, two have lower tax rates and twenty-two are higher. And they range from, uh, seven dollars and sixty-seven cents to twenty-one dollars and fifty-five cents per thousand, uh, which with the average rate of about fourteen dollars and twenty-five cents, uh, compared to our tax levy rate of ten dollars for seventeen eighteen. This next slide gives you a little comparison with the other cities in Des Moines County. Burlington's rate for seventeen eighteen is sixteen thirty-three, Danville twelve forty-five, Minneapolis eleven sixty-eight, Middletown twelve seventy-five, and West Burlington ten dollars. Uh, you can see what a hundred percent valuation history is. From about two thousand seven through two thousand seventeen, our valuation has grown from one ninety, one hundred ninety-eight million, six hundred ninety-nine thousand to two hundred and seventy-five million, two hundred six thousand. And it's about a six percent growth rate over that, uh, ten year, over last, or actually over last year. Uh, taxable valuations used for setting the levy, uh, regular is a hundred and forty-six million and debt with debt service, a hundred and ninety-three million, and ag land is, uh, eight hundred thousand for fifteen nineteen fiscal year. And like the bottom line says, assessors in process of doing reassessments. Uh, the commercial industrial evaluations will be reflected in the nineteen twenty numbers and residential will be reflected in the twenty twenty-one numbers. Uh, we have taxable valuations by the major classes. Eighteen nineteen, we have sixty-two million, uh, five hundred and forty-six thousand in the commercial, and the residential, I'm sorry, residential, hundred and seven million in the commercial, uh, twelve million in the industrial, and in the last couple of years now, we're showing, uh, the multi-residential, which is at four point eight million. And the Iowa Department of Revenue issued a nine percent equalization order for commercial property in Des Moines County for fiscal year nineteen. The rollback, as you can see, over the last fourteen years, from oh-four to oh-five to eighteen nineteen, uh, at one time it was as low as, uh, forty-four, uh, forty-four percent where it's, uh, coming back to eighteen nineteen at fifty-five point six two oh nine percent. That's for residential property, for agricultural, agriculture used to be at a hundred percent. Now they've also got a rollback to fifty-four point forty-four percent. Commercial, it's in the ten, ten percent reduction in the commercial. At one time, it used to be a hundred percent. It, a couple of years it buried in there. Now it's down to ninety percent. The same thing with industrial, and the multifamily is, uh, over the next five to six years or over eight-year period, it's gonna be the same as the, uh, residential rollback. This year, it's, or this next year will be at seventy-eight point seventy-six percent. So you can kinda see a graph there, residential rollback, what it's done from oh-four, oh-five to eighteen nineteen, how it's, uh, was close to in the high forties, then dropped into the low forties and kinda rebounding now back into the, uh, middle fifties. Uh, multi-residential properties, like I said, uh, is a phase out over a eight-year period. Uh, this next year, it'll be at eighty-two point five percent or seventy-eight point seventy-five percent. And then revert on down to where it's the same as a residential in, in twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, in eighteen nineteen, we're gonna have two hundred and fifty thousand, uh, assessed value. The rollback at seventy-eight point seventy-five percent gives you a taxable value of, uh, a hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty, a hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five with a tax rate of ten dollars. It's gonna be taxes at nineteen, one thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Uh, ninety-three, ninety-three dollars less than, than this year. Where you can see in the first year in sixteen seventeen, with that rollback, uh, multi-residential property actually was their taxes was reduced by three hundred and sixty-nine dollars if you had an assessed property evaluation of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And it's just kind of a bar graph that just shows how it's going on down. Uh, commercial and industrial property tax replacement, uh, promise broken. Legislature created standing appropriation beginning fiscal fifteen to reimburse local governments for tax reductions due to the ten percent rollback for commercial and industrial property owners. The standing appropriation was promised to continue but recapped at the actual fiscal seventeen amount. For fiscal eighteen, the city expects to receive a total of a hundred and sixty-two thousand, a hundred and eleven dollars. There's a bill now in the Senate Subcommittee proposing a two-year phase out to start at the beginning of fiscal year nineteen and then completion of twenty. So if that, this bill would fly through, uh, we would see a reduction in, in dollars coming from the state. But I just got an email this afternoon, uh, from the league saying that there's, the House has, uh, come up with another bill with a phase out period over four years to not start till actually next fiscal year would be nineteen twenty. And it would phase it out to where there's, uh, standing appropriations. After four years would still be twenty-five million instead of a hundred and fifty million that was promised today. So we'd lose about fifty-four thousand in revenue next year and the next year a hundred and eight thousand more in revenue. So a loss of a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars based on the current levy rates would be in the equivalent of a dollar ten levy rate increase. Property tax dollars are the city's largest source of the funds for our general government operation. Uh, we budgeted to receive one million, four hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars in property tax dollars at the ten dollar tax levy rate. That's an increase of fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars uh, from the amount that we're receiving this year in fiscal seventeen eighteen. And that's due to the increase in property values. Uh, state limits are what the cities can raise in their general fund to eight dollars and ten cents, uh, per thousand of taxable value. Uh, we in West Burlington use some additional levies outside the eight-ten limit. And the liability property and self-insurance cost is nineteen cents, over nineteen cents. FICA and IFRS is a little over eighty-one cents and, and other employee benefits are, uh, not quite ninety, eighty-nine cents, not quite ninety cents. So the total tax rate for the eighteen nineteen published is, uh, ten dollars per thousand. This chart here for anybody that's interested in doing it, they can kinda figure out what their, uh, values are. If you start with your assessed property value for residential property, if you have a house that's assessed at a hundred thousand, the rollback is fifty-five point six two oh nine, which gives you a taxable value of fifty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars. And you're, uh, then you take that times, uh, a thou- uh, times ten and divide it by a thousand and you come up with five hundred and fifty-six dollars for the city, uh, property tax that you would owe the city. And you can see on the residential property taxes, uh, over the years, uh, from oh-seven, oh-eight to eighteen nineteen, what a hundred, a hundred thousand dollar of assessed value property after the rollback, what your taxes are and what, uh, off to the side. Of the last one, it could be to be, uh, an increase or a decrease depending on what the rollback was to where next year you would save thirteen dollars in that same house. Commercial property taxes, kinda the same thing, oh-seven to oh-eight. You can see a, a million dollar property at a one time assessed at a hundred percent. Uh, would've paid, uh, let's see, a hundred percent would've been, uh, ninety-eight hundred dollars a year in property taxes. Now that's down to ninety percent. You're, you're only paying that, uh, um, nine thousand dollars property taxes. Then property tax history, this kinda shows what all of the levies are, uh, combined and from oh-seven, oh-eight, um, down to seventeen eighteen. What the school levy is, what the city levy is, county levies, community college, gives you the total levy. In oh-seven, oh-eight, it was forty dollars and eighty-nine cents to where in seventeen eighteen this year, it's, uh, thirty-two dollars and ten cents. Uh, this shows you what our levy rates have been doing since oh-four, oh-five. We're at one, we were at nine seventy-five, went up to ten and nine eighty-six, then nine eighty, nine seventy-five, then ten-ten, and ten dollars for the last two years with a proposal of ten dollars for next fiscal year. Uh, general fund is chief operating fund of the city that supports operations most identified with the city such as, uh, fire and police departments. The largest revenue received in the general fund is property taxes. And it also receives all the other income that's not required by law contractual agreement to be deposited elsewhere. Also included in the revenue from licenses, permits, and earnings of investments. For fiscal year eighteen nineteen, the general revenue fund is budgeted at two million, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and expenses of two million, five hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. That results in a budget deficit of about a hundred and eighteen thousand, five, a hundred and eighteen, five oh five, five oh eight, excuse me. And the budget deficit equivalent of an eighty cent levy rate shortfall for a balanced budget. So at the end of fiscal year eighteen nineteen, the fund, the general fund is estimated at a balance of three hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars. That would result in a reserve balance of about fifteen point zero one percent. And if the state reduces the commercial industrial backfill one-third next year, the estimate ending balance is gonna drop significantly further to about thirteen point sixty-three percent. See on this bar graph, uh, general fund decrease or increase over last from oh, oh-seven, oh-eight to eighteen nineteen. Tax increments financing, uh, this is what TIF is paying for. Uh, we budgeted five thousand dollars for partnering for the future. Uh, General Electric, the development agreement at sixty-two thousand. Uh, campus community developers, seventy thousand, two thousand thirteen, GO bond, nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Two thousand seventeen, GO bond, a hundred and seventeen thousand. Twenty fifteen residential property, uh, four thousand, four hundred and seventy-four, West Burnin' Condos, twelve thousand, three eleven. Residential prop, projects, five thousand, nine hundred and forty-three, West Burnin' Condos projects, nineteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight. That amounts about one point, uh, three million in, in TIF dollars that we have to pay for those expenses. The city had an additional two million, a little over two million in valuations in the TIF districts that were unused for TIF debt in fiscal eighteen nineteen and we all, you know, we all know that that was returned to the other entities so that they can like, collect their taxes off of that. Road use tax fund is, uh, from, comes from the vehicle registration fees, motor vehicle fuel taxes and excise tax imposed on rental of automobiles and a used tax on trailers. And the distribution is based on the population. The estimated amount by the state for fiscal eighteen is the distribution of a hundred and sixty-one fifty per capita. Uh, so when doing the budget, an estimate a hundred and twenty point and fifty cents was used. So economic instability and fluctuating fuel costs can result in changes in the fund. In fiscal fourteen fifteen, the state increased the tax, gas tax ten cents per gallons, which resulted in annual increase of approximately fifty thousand dollars. Uh, the city budgeted to receive three hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars road use taxes with expenditures of three hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. The expenditures include seal coating of fifteen thousand dollars and operating expenses. Local option sales tax revenues, there's a graph chart there. Uh, you can tell, uh, from oh, from two thousand and two thousand and one fiscal year to eighteen nineteen, kinda what we've, what we've received in local option sales taxes. Some years been higher, some years been a little lower. Uh, but I'm kinda happy to say that we can trace every penny that we've ever received and ever, and have ever spent from the time we've had local option sales tax in this community. And this is what we're paying with, uh, local option sales tax. Uh, we estimate that the revenues are gonna be five hundred and ten thousand and expenses are budgeted at four hundred and eighty-five thousand. Leaving the unspent estimate of about twenty-four thousand for eighteen nineteen. Uh, police and fire expenditures are two hundred and twenty-four thousand. Debt service is a hundred and forty-nine thousand, ambulance forty thousand, library thirty-seven thousand, airport twenty-two thousand, sidewalks ten thousand, economic development twenty-five hundred. And the revenue by sources on the, this excludes the transfers. So, um, you can tell on that pie chart, uh, the city budgeted fourteen million, five hundred and one thousand. And that includes the debt proceeds for the wastewater plant of five, five million. I should say not fourteen, fourteen million, five hundred and one thousand. In that pie chart, you can see where, where the money's coming from. Debt proceeds, property taxes, miscellaneous charges and services and small other taxes, license permits. Then the tax revenue breakdown, we received about twenty-three point one percent of the revenue from taxes. And the breakdown of where those taxes come from is shown below. Property taxes thirty-four percent, TIF thirty-seven, other taxes two, hotel, hotel one, road use eleven, local option sales tax fifteen. And then we have the expenditures by function. Business type is, uh, the biggest one this year. Usually not that big, but it's water and sewer because we're spending quite a bit on a new sewer plant, so there's seven million, a little over seven million going there. And the rest is, uh, public safety, public works, culture and recreation. All the programs that we have to, uh, uh, report to the state, capital projects, debt service, and so on. Capital projects and equipment, the wastewater plant construction is five million. That's state revolving loan fund. Uh, seventeen GO bond street projects, two million, that's a remainder to bond proceeds. To Duke Year Avenue Agency Street Broadway in Mount Pleasant. Sidewalks, uh, ten thousand, will come a lot of local option sales tax. Seal code project, uh, fifteen thousand road use funds. A fire department flooring for meeting room and upgrade kitchen, eighty-five hundred, that coming out of general fund. Uh, dump truck bed, thirty thousand out of sewer fund. And a Kubota zero turn mower, nine thousand out of sewer fund. Transfers to the capital funds, and you can see, uh, this year, we're not, uh, transferring, or this coming year, we're not gonna transfer anything to the airport capital fund because we've got enough money in there now to, to pay for that, but that was coming out of local option sales tax. Uh, city hall, um, this year we had twenty thousand in there, next year we're putting five thousand in. Street capital fund, uh, this year twenty thousand, next year, uh, zero that out. Administration capital fund stays the same at five thousand. Fire capital equipment fund reducing that from sixty thousand to forty-five thousand. Uh, police department capital fund staying the same at twenty thousand. Uh, police department capital fund staying the same at twenty thousand. And pool capital equipment fund staying the same at, uh, five thousand. So we reduced, uh, transfers from the general fund by about fifty thousand dollars over this year. Payroll, uh, the employer share IPRs is nine point forty-four percent for our regular employees. That's an increase of about a half a percent. And ten point twenty-one percent for police and fire, that's an increase of, uh, uh, point three seven percent. The employee share, the IPR is six point twenty-nine for regular employees. That's an increase of point thirty-four percent. And six point eighty-one percent for police and fire, an increase of twenty-five percent, uh, point two five percent. Not twenty-five percent, point two five. And we budgeted two point four wage increase for most employees. Uh, city's budget to expand one million five hundred sixteen thousand, uh, two hundred and forty-three dollars for wages in fiscal eighteen nineteen. Our health insurance costs are three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. IPRs cost is a hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And FICA Medicare costs are a hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars. Uh, utilities and water, none, none of this has been, uh, voted on yet as far as the utilities go. But the water rates we budgeted to increase thirty cents per thousand gallon. The monthly distribution charge would go up ninety cents. And of course, the first three thousand dollars is no charge with the payment and the monthly distribution. Uh, so, uh, three thousand, a million gallons would cost you, would go from seven-ten to seven-forty a thousand. The next five hundred thousand would go from four-eighty-four to five-fourteen. And all water over a million and a half would be going from two-eighty-nine a thousand to three-nineteen. Uh, users of three thousand gallons of water would see an increase of ninety cents per month or ten-eighty per year. Users of five thousand gallons of water would see an increase of a hundred fif, uh, one dollar and fifty cents per month or eighteen dollars a year. Sewer garbage and recycling, uh, sewer rates increased because of DNR mandates. Significant last few years for fiscal eighteen nineteen, no increase has been budgeted for sewer rates. Rate will remain at nine-forty per thousand in addition to an eight-sixty monthly sewer fee. Uh, the sewer capital project charge of a dollar a month, uh, per user's budget to remain the same, one dollar per month. This generates about, uh, twenty thousand dollars annually. Garbage rates presently are twelve dollars per month and our budget to increase to twelve-twenty-five. Recycling fees are presently three-sixty-five and will increase to three-seventy-five per month. This'll be a ten cent per month increase or a dollar twenty annually. Uh, total increase for water, sewer, sewer capital project, garbage and recycling, based upon the water usage, uh, yeah, you use three thousand gallons, it's a dollar twenty-five a month or fifteen dollars annually. If you use five thousand gallons a month, it's a dollar eighty-five a month or twenty-two dollars and twenty cents annually. And here's what our debt is. Uh, we have Geo bonds for the public works building, for the rescue fire vehicle, for aerial truck, for street resurfacing, the water project, two water project bonds, uh, wastewater plant improvement and leasing of computer equipment. And it shows you that, uh, total payments is one million nine hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars. So according to the Iowa constitution, the city's maximum debt capacity is five percent of the city's a hundred percent ass, assessed value, which would be a maximum debt capacity of thirteen million, six hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven. And the city will begin fiscal eighteen nineteen at forty-five point seven percent of debt limit capacity, six million, two hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars. And we'll end the year, if we don't do anything special or incur any more debt, at thirty-seven point seven-six percent or five million, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars. That's it. Any comments, questions? I wanna thank staff for putting this together, Leslie, Dan, Kelly, everybody working on their budgets and keeping the budgets pretty tight. And any objections to closing the public hearing? I'll close the public hearing then. We'll go to new business, which as item number one is consider resolution approving the budget and establishing the levy rate for fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen with, uh, published tax rate at ten dollars per thousand. Motion to support, any discussion? Roll call.
Hey, Mayor?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Motion carrying. Item number two is consider payment Mike Nelson concrete for completed on Broadway Street reconstruction project. Amount of fifty-seven thousand, forty-three dollars and thirty-two cents.
Motion to approve. Support.
Motion to support, any discussion?
Matt, have you heard from Mike when he might start this spring?
I did not, uh, he needed to get in touch with Four Seasons. Uh, one thing Deb did bring up, uh, was a lot of your construction workers, they put on unemployment for the winner. And she wasn't sure if Bennett called them back yet. So we need to make sure he had more work to do besides just your project because bringing back off unemployment puts them back on. So she has not gotten back to me yet, so, once I do here, I'll definitely.
Yeah, cause Steve was in the other day wanting, he was pretty anxious to get, thought tearing it up early was a great idea, so.
I think they're still waiting, just kinda keep an eye on the weather, so, I will.
Roll call.
Please?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Hey, Mayor?
Aye.
Carrying. If they have any old business? Anyone wishing to address council matters we did discuss or didn't discuss tonight? Entertain, motion adjourned.
That'll be it.
Second?
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
He's adjourned, thank you.